Now, keeping in mind, that does not include the summer residents. So roughly, if you double that, you're coming out to roughly 37,000 residents at a particular time in the town. Going back again for the leadership, you need to have a program in place, you need to have a leader in place. When you have 37,000 people in a town, you need to have guidance, you need to have somebody that's embedded in the community, somebody who's part of the community fabric, working with the merchants, working with the residents, working with the different beach associations, working with the visitors, to ensure that everybody is getting the services that we're paying for. And that doesn't happen today. There have been, I think, maybe three different resident troopers overseeing the town of East Slime in the last five years. The continuity of management doesn't exist. Where is the philosophy? Where is the vision? Where is the strategy? Where is the planning? What is the program for the town of East Slime? I haven't seen it, and I've asked the first selectman, and we don't have a program. You need a program to be successful. In beginning July 1, the contract renews itself for the state of Connecticut. The cost for the resident trooper salary is approximately $212,000 plus any overtime. In 2015, 2016, the town budgeted approximately $155,000, but was billed $173,000. Overtime, unregulated expense. First selectman mentioned that next year, I believe, the 2016, 2017 cost is going to be 100 percent to the town of East Slime. And we all know that the state of Connecticut budget right now is, there's no such thing as a budget of the state of Connecticut, obviously. And I can assume, based upon historical billing, that that $212 will somehow go south, and the going north will be a higher number, because they'll bill us for overtime, they'll bill us for lunches and everything else, I can imagine. Again, it's not the individual trooper, it's the program or model by which they operate under, which is the concern. There was one other item that we picked up, and again, these two items, the trooper salary and the next item, the radio system, were not in scope for our committee to review, but we thought they were so egregious that we had to make it part of the presentation. I think it's good information, they're implementing an enhanced radio system, the state police, of which the town of East Slime was going to receive a bill for about $150,000 with no input whatsoever. Here's the bill, in 30 days, please pay the bill. Unregulated costs, being from the board of finance, I don't think we'd like to see these things, or as a resident or a taxpayer. We have no control over the state expenses pertaining to the program that we are currently working under. Regarding the $150,000, I understand recently that it might be deferred for a year or so, but eventually, that cost will be sent to the town. It might not be next year, or two years, or three years, but I can guarantee you, we will see a bill at one point or another for an enhanced radio system. The town, by the way, does have a reliable radio system in place. We already have a radio system. We don't need a secondary radio system for the police to operate efficiently and effectively. We already have that infrastructure in place. I mentioned earlier about the contract with the state police, excuse me, with the state of Connecticut. And I pulled this one section out there, because I thought, again, it was, it should be known to the board of selectmen and also the audience. The contract between the state of Connecticut and the town states, quote, "The town shall hold harmless and indemnify the state of Connecticut and the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, its officers, agents, and employees from any liability." I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to pretend that I'm going to interpret this correctly, but basically, my layman understanding is if something happens in the town, the state can't be sued for anything. The town assumes all liability for any action which one of the officers gets involved in, and the liability falls within the town, not the state of Connecticut. We signed a contract that says, "We're going to hold them harmless." However, they did, as part of the contract, make the town include the state in a $1 million insurance binder, I guess you'd call it, in case for some reason that a smart plaintiff would sue the state or the officer involved in that particular issue. So, in looking from the private sector, looking at this contract, you know, we would never even composed to sign anything like this, but we're forced into it because we're part of the model, or part of the program. So we have no choice in the matter. Going to slide nine, which is the recommendation. In this first sentence, it's probably the crux of the whole problem that we see here with this issue. Strong and credible leadership is the foundation for any successful business. And we looked at this from a business model and a policing model. Even more importantly, for a police department, a good leader will work with the town CEO, the board of selectmen, other town agencies, which is not happening today, as well as the residents and taxpayers of this town, in developing and implementing a program that is supposed to be supported by all the stakeholders, not just a small group. The recommendation is terminate the contract with the state of Connecticut as quickly and efficiently as possible, but no later than June 30, because that's when their contract expires for their new two-year contract. The caveat we have in here is the transition cannot take place without first appointing an interim or permanent director or chief to directly manage the East Slime PD on behalf of the town. We can't, the committee can't emphasize enough the leadership issue here, which creates all these other problems, whether it be administrative, whether it be budgetary, or whether it be operational. That leader is responsible for all those aspects. Not following the recommendation of appointing a interim director or chief will further exacerbate the already tenuous situation. The committee's recommendation in conclusion is based on all the information and documents that have been reviewed, and without reservation, this committee recommends that the town of East Slime implement an immediate action plan, which is different than what we did, to terminate the contract with the state of Connecticut and form its own independent police department. In summary and in closing, as a resident here for maybe 50-some years, and a taxpayer and part of this committee, and knowing what's going on, I was totally disappointed, shocked, disappointed, whatever you want to call it, in the model that's currently being used today by our police officers. It was not designed for today's policing. 1950s was great. We had 3,000 people here, and everybody knew everybody, and Joe Doura was the guy in the beat.
It was Joe Montiello.
Right, right. But today, the policing model has changed, and as we watch what's going on in the news every night, it's more philosophical, it's more strategic, it's more analytical, it's more technology-driven. You need a strong leader to implement that solution here in East Slime. If we don't do it, I can guarantee you, it might not be today or tomorrow, but something will happen here, where everybody's going to be asking the questions, "Why didn't we do it, when we knew we had a problem?" So I'll end my comments and open to questions to the board.
Thank you. That's how it will work. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gardner, and thank you to your committee. I am in debt to all the good work you've done, and done quickly. I only assembled this group 45 days ago.
September bill.
I do know. So one month ago. And gave you 60 days, and it turned out you didn't need all of that time. Thank you very much for your work. I sincerely appreciate it. You give a compelling discussion here, a compelling argument for doing this. Are there questions for Mr. Gardner or anyone on his commission?
I have a couple.
Good.
First of all, I wanted to thank you all for the work you put in, the time you have devoted, and your obvious expertise. In your collective opinion, is there anything the town would be losing by leaving the state trooper program?
Question.
I'll answer that with absolutely none. Quite the contrary. There'd be a tremendous amount of gain by going to an independent police department, such as grants, for example, from a budgetary standpoint, from a leadership standpoint, from working with the board and all the other departments. So there'd be, the traction the other way would be extensive, more so than, the pros and cons? The pros are very heavily, and I don't see a con, to be quite frank with you, of leaving, because the state of Connecticut still has to provide those resources and services that you would have had, whether it be independent or to the resident trooper program. You still have all those services by state statute. So nothing is lost by going independent, and I think the pros are quite heavily weighted.
Okay. Were all of you, this is your consensus, was there anything that was contentious among you, differences of opinion, or did you just say, "Man, this is a slam dunk, we're all on board"?
I don't think anything becomes a slam dunk until you had a chance to investigate it. As I mentioned earlier, we took the report that was done by the chiefs of police, whoever that was, and we took it as reference material, but I think we wanted to make our own evaluation of what we saw, what we observed, and what we read. And I think the focus on is observations and looking at documentation. And I don't, I'll defer to anybody on the committee who has any other difference on that or concern, but from my understanding, we were all in agreement after we observed some things and read some things, and was able to get out and talk to the other stakeholders involved with this process. The only thing we, I think we really were concerned why it didn't happen sooner.
Me too.
Okay, and you're satisfied that any questions or concerns you might have had about undertaking this process were answered to your satisfaction?
Absolutely. I mean, even though scope is now, it was very blatant and very obvious. We didn't have to do much digging, believe me, to find the issues that we wanted to look for and find out what was the cause and effect, what are the root causes of the problem. And right at the top, it's the leadership issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments from anybody independent of that? And that's okay if you do. Okay.
Leadership?
No.
You sure picked a good spokesperson, let me tell you.
The money was right.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I have quite a few comments, but they are primarily based on the document that was provided, I think, compiled by the Police Chiefs Association.
That might come up in the next report from the sergeants.
Okay. Because your committee was not charged with looking at the financial impact.
Correct.
And making any comparisons for that. Okay?
That was out of scope.
And...
Can you talk about this one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But in particular, on this, I ask you to refer to page three of that, which would show a typical structure.
Yep.
So, the, as it shows here on the typical structure, the, obviously, the chief of police replaces the resident state trooper. Now, the executive officer, in your vision, this would necessitate as sort of a deputy or a lieutenant?
I think, yes, I think the committee, we discussed it briefly, and maybe Joe, you want to answer that? He's more knowledgeable on that, but yes.
One of the things that we looked at, as far as the chain of command goes, it goes, it's kind of like twofold. A chief, obviously, would be the optimum to run the department, as whether or not you have a deputy chief, or you have a captain or a lieutenant. The issue that you might start out with here is, we also looked at the contract that the town has with the police department today. If you wanted to supervision, in which that would be a recommendation, to stay out of the union so that you have supervision and can run your department in a way it should be running, in a way the town would want it to be run, you would, so you would go above and stay above the rank of lieutenant, because in the contract itself, it says the lieutenant has to be in the union. So just be aware of that. If you decide to do that, you decide to do that, but you would be looking at, for a second, either a captain or a deputy chief. And with 21 people, you might not want to go to the deputy, but you could certainly do that.
Okay. And then the person who's responsible for the record-keeping and securing the records, would that be an additional person, or could that be, is that an isolated job, or could that job be done by a regular police officer?
Oh, no, no. You wouldn't want to do that in the first place. That's a full-time position with the responsibility by statute, and that's regulated, and you can really get yourself into trouble if you're not right on reporting and having that and being accountable, then you, because you're dealing with money, you're taking care of the people that come in, the insurance companies, that's a big, that's a big job.
Okay, so that would be a separate...
That's a separate issue, and you also have to, you're in strict regulations as to how you're going to store, where you're going to store, and under what conditions. That's a really big thing.
Okay. So, we would be responsible for, really, total, total management.
Everything.
Except for a major crime, in which case, the state police would come in and assist.
That's right. Yep. Anytime, he hit on it right real well. We would not lose anything that the state police that gives out there today to any town. They will do the same with us without a contract.
What would be the breaking point for determining a major crime?
That would be up to the chief.
So the chief would be responsible for calling in the assistance of the state?
If whatever assistance he thinks he needs, or the town fathers think that they need, they can call it in. Yes.
State's attorney.
And of course, the state's attorney would be involved on it too. Right.
Now, I remember fondly many of the briefings given by Sergeant Vance.
Yes, yes.
And who would, who would fulfill that, that position?
I thought about that. I would say, at this point, that would probably be a decision that the first selectman would make, but he could do it himself, he could have someone speak for the town, or he could have the chief do it. And a lot of cases, and when you deal with homicides or serious crimes, it's probably going to be the chief, because he's the guy that knows what's going on, and not anybody wants to stand in front of that microphone and talk about something, they don't know what they're saying, and they don't want to be quoted saying the wrong things. So, that's something that'll come in time, and you learn from that, but pretty much, you're going to want somebody that really knows about the case, too.
Well, we're just trying to get a handle on the number of additional personnel that might be required.
Right.
And then the section on the public, the public safety, the dispatchers, under this plan, they would be wrapped into as part of the police department?
Yes. Again, that's up to this group.
But is that the recommendation of your committee?
Well, today, they're all qualified, they, when we did our talks with the, with the sergeants and everything, they had absolutely no problems. They're well-qualified, the dispatchers, they know the radio system, they tell us the radio system is good to go. That's a big savings, and with their training that they already have, I really don't see a problem.
So would they fall under the jurisdiction, then, of the chief of police?
I think that, again, that's going to be your decision, how you want to do that, because you're dealing with two different, you're dealing, also, that group, I believe, dispatches fire and ambulance, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the collect system.
Maybe one training, one other training.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is it the committee's recommendation that we proceed with the chief of police and the restructuring prior to taking on a building?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is it the committee's recommendation that we hire the chief of police and establish the structure prior to having a building?
Yeah, it didn't, that didn't come up to us. The only thing that we would say, and we have talked about, is you need to, for economy, for the liability, for the savings of money, if you're going to go, you should go, and, you know, your building is going to come down the road. I mean, that, that was specifically not part of our task, because I believe the first selectman thinks that's a different, that's a bigger thing to deal with, or another item to deal with to get this to happen. But for the liability, for the command structure, which is the really important thing, he keyed on it, that you've got 21, 22 good, very good people, but they've never been allowed to really go out and do the job that they're trained for and that they're capable of doing, and you need somebody, this town needs somebody, stop wasting the money, and make the switch, and get it done as soon as you can, and then move forward with different things, because there are going to be other things that you're going to need as you go along. It's not that simple, but there's a lot of things that we have to do to make this thing happen, because we've gone, we've never had a regular police department. It's always been under the resident trooper program.
You examined, I think, you mentioned, Mr. Gardner mentioned that you did look at the A&amp;O manual that was done for the town, by, the officers themselves worked on it. Is that sufficient to...
Well, the two of us, we actually did the first run on that, and went through that a couple of years back, and, yeah, probably we'd have to take a look at it and update it to a full-time, change some wording, and it, but it's good to go. Yeah?
All right. I think that that's my questions for this evening, but we're going to have additional discussion on the actual...
Absolutely. We're only halfway there.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
And then, hey, other discussions, just to learn, are you looking to have a question?
A few questions. Mr. Gardner, you mentioned that you think the police policies that we have right now are outdated, were based on the 1950s, 60s. Do you have recommendations, or do you think we should go to, if we become an independent force, become state accredited, do you think it's something, or that's something that new policy would be dictated by the chief and the police commission?
I think whether it be here, in place, health policies are always in, need to be reviewed and updated on a continuous basis. To exclude them or not review them is wrong. I think the policy would be updated. However, as Joe mentioned, I think the most critical element of this whole process, of the leadership, getting a chief in, so that person can establish the chain of command, and also what happens with the department in concert with the board of selectmen. There needs to be a vision. There's no vision here. There needs to be a strategy in place. There's no strategy. The leader, that's his or her job, is to come up there and develop this, develop a program in place, and then say, "These policies need to be updated, this needs to be done," or whatever the case might be. But I think a good, strong leader is so critical to the success of this particular initiative, that, I think you mentioned about the building first, you need to have a leader in there. You need to have a leader to input of what goes on from a budgetary standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, from an operational standpoint, working together in a collaborative manner with the town, not independently and going to the state and saying, "No, no, we're not doing this, and is grant money available?" There's a lot of things that would happen once you transition from a, the program to an independent police force. So I think there's many, many, as I said earlier, positive things that will happen once you move over to that.
Okay. You mentioned the radio system, that the state may be billing us, we may have to switch over again. If, is, if we go to our own police, independent police force, is that something that we're not going to have to deal with in the future?
That's correct.
Would have our own system?
My understanding is, we have a, as of one day, I spoke to the person in charge, and we have a very reliable radio system. We don't have to add any additional technology.
So our radio system's sufficient? I know we're possibly putting up another antenna up by...
That's correct. There's a tower, I think, going up, I want to say Astaway Road.
Yeah, Deripon.
And I think that completes the network.
And that completes, that completes it. So our system's sufficient? We would go down to one radio?
Yeah.
The only question, would you recommend, would your committee recommend, if we move forward with this, to overlap a chief with a resident state trooper?
No. I would say no.
Would it be a complete handoff?
Financially, no. And philosophically, no. I don't think we need a state employee guiding our leader, who we've hand-selected because of his credentials. I think that we want that person to establish their credibility by themselves with the town and saying, "Here's my action plan. This is what I want to do."
Okay, so that makes sense. So it's a handoff. If we were to move forward with this, and let's say, this past referendum, can we leave the resident state trooper program in the middle of the year? Would we get the money back from its salary, or are we in a contract for the whole year?
We have a 30-day out. We give notify, the state of Connecticut, my understanding is, is a 30-day notification, then on January 1, we no longer want your services, we're terminating the contract, contractual relationship.
So that means we stop paying?
Yeah.
We don't pay upfront, right? We pay as...
In a reach.
Correct. So they would bill us as we use the service?
Okay, so we would not be paying for it?
No.
So if we switch over, we'll, okay.
And if you do the math, it's quite a bit of savings, if you look at the math involved, too.
Yep. My only other question is, and maybe, I don't know if you're the right folks to ask, there's other revenues that can be, can be right with, I know speeding tickets still, even speeding tickets would still go to the state? Is that correct? And we get a $10, we get so much back? Okay, you may have the answer.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll hold my question.
Sergeant Mason's going to come up, just so you know what the agenda is tonight. Sergeant Mason will be up next on details.
Then, then that's all I have. Thank you guys for your service and for your quick turnaround.
Well, I have a couple of questions, and maybe it'll be answered by Sergeant Mason, but I, one of the concerns, I think, is, and you've addressed it somewhat, our access to the resources of the state police. Once we leave that resident trooper system, not only in a, you know, a major crime, we've got a murder, but a step down from that, you have a nasty automobile accident, and you really need those resources of the state police to conduct the reconstruction activities that a local department might not have. So are we still going to have that pipeline to the state police for those resources when we need it?
I think, Joe, correct, by state statute. They must provide those services upon request by the first selectman or by the chief of the department. So by state statute, they just can't say, "No." They have to make those resources available.
Right. No, I saw that in the statute, but I guess, as more, as a practical matter, do you get a little bit higher up in the file of requests, when you have a resident state trooper, or you're going to get service?
Joe answers.
I guess that's the question. How's it really work?
How it really works is, if you call and ask the state's attorney, if you need help on a crime, ask the state's attorney, you're going to get the help right away. The state does that. Any towns that have gone over from resident trooper to a full-time, the state's there. If you need a dive team, you need dogs, anything that you can think of that they have in their inventory, we still get by state statute, and they actually do come. Now, the, one of the things that you might say is, "Well, sometimes it takes a little bit of time." Well, that's true. It depends on where the people are coming from. That's always been a thing, but even today, in any town that, like, even if Hartford called for help, you still might take a little bit of time before you get there, depending on where they're coming from. But that's the way the state is set up.
Sheriff Ledry told us when we were over there, that they've already used a SWAT team since they've switched, and that they switched two months ago.
Yeah.
They've already been there.
And then I guess I, the other question I have, and second, for a second, Nickerson referred to it as, in his opening comments, where you have a state trooper from Danbury that just happens to be passing through and takes control of the scene. Right now, with the resident state trooper program, they have that jurisdictional piece, where they can step in and...
When you become your own, they don't do that.
So, and so you would, you would have more independence from the state police?
Total.
And would be more at the request of...
It's tot, yes. They come in as an invited guest at that time.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have.
Any others? Folks, again, I hope you stick around to the, at least to the end of the meeting, and my guess is, we'll need your services again at some point during this process. Very much appreciated. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Tom, before I bring Sergeant Mason up?
Yeah, I just want to close with a comment that I think the committee is in agreement, consensus-wise, that the, the most seriously, serious issue facing the town of East Slime is the leadership issue and the liability issue. And I think from a risk-threat assessment standpoint, that you need to address those issues. And I think the leadership addresses the liability issue. Without this leadership issue, and then the person coming up with a program, which is adopted by the town, working with all the town agencies, I think the town is, is in trouble, to be quite frank, without having those elements in place. And I think the leadership, or the person, can be done more quickly than a building. So I wouldn't wait for the building, I'd go right for the leadership and resolve 90% of the... I'd go right for the leadership and resolve ninety percent of the problems. That's my guess.
Thank you, Tom. And we have a plan on that, too, how we're going to get this done without a building initially.
Yep.
And thank you for that. Thank you, once again. As I, as I discussed, Sergeant Mason's here for some details, and Sergeant Mason, as you're coming up, I can kind of give the history of the relationship. I, in speaking to the seven sergeants, who really, first of all, I commend, I commend your group. Each and every sergeant stepped up and I tasked them with doing the homework. I said, you guys want this, we got to, we got to do this together. And they each went out and spoke to towns and spoke to all sorts of, gathered information all sorts of different ways to make sure we're doing this and we can do this successfully. I'll also say that, you know, we are a budget-conscious town, aren't we? You know, and, you know, the buck ends up stopping here, right? So, so we are always mindful of what any change, any purchase, any significant ordinance like this will do to our bottom line. Mr. Gardner made a compelling argument about, you know, we need leadership and we're not getting our money's worth based on what we're putting in. And then I started with, we have to be cost-neutral here, at least initially. We have to be able to flip a switch and go, you know, we had a resident state trooper for $212,000 plus or minus. Can we hire a chief? Can we pay rent at Waterford for their jails for the next several years until we figure out what we're going to do about a police station? The administrative clerk that we may need, the extra half a dispatcher will need to cover a shift. Those are the personnel. Can we do that relatively inside that bubble of 212,000? We're close to that. We think we are within that. We think we can get a quality chief for $100,000. Ninety to one-ten, okay? Because we don't, we haven't been out there yet shopping the market. We've done our research. Ledgers gets a little bit more than 100, but, you know, we typically, as a town, pay a little less than everybody else, anyway. We have one and a half administrators. I'm sorry.
So isn't that the truth?
Fifty years as a teacher, Mrs. Hardy. Congratulations on that. So we have one and a half administrative clerks now. We need two. We had one administrative clerk. We have another half coming on. It's in our budget, starting on January first. We'll need two. We have four and a half just full-time dispatchers. We need five. So we're already, we're half there, we're half here, and so we're, we've been piecing this together anyway, not slipping it by you, but we needed it. Frankly, we're a busy town. We don't have 3,000 people anymore. We have a force that is straight out at all times, but with a lack of true leadership and direction and focus, and, and thank you for that inspiring brief. Sergeant Mason's here maybe to run down shortly and quickly, not, not into great detail. Maybe we do this at the public hearing if we get that far. But, but, you know, how, what this would look like.
Right. Okay. So good evening. What I want to do first while I'm up here is just kind of, I've got a, kind of a script thing, just so I can kind of stay on point, because this can obviously, as we see, open a huge can of worms. We have a subcommittee that was tasked with gaining information from us outside agencies and formulating their own unbiased opinion, which I think they've done a great job with. We've met with them several times. But just to, as I was taking some notes, as I was hearing, Mr. Cunningham, the CSP resources, you mentioned accident reconstruction, you know, things that we would have. A few of us have always had in our mind, I've been, I'm coming up on my fifteenth year here. Under this program, there are officers that have been here over thirty years under this exact program. The one thing I've always wanted to ask a lot of people in town, and especially when it comes to the political side, is not what would we lose, or why, why, why don't we stay with it, but why would we stay with the CSP? You tell me what the town gains by staying with that program. And I think as this committee has come to an agreement, it's, we're actually at a loss financially, service-wise. The, you brought up a serious accident, the reconstruction issue. We do have accident reconstruction. Training is one of the, is one of the areas that, obviously, we do have a training budget. It was cut a little bit this year, but we do have a training budget. In the aspect of when I speak with us going with Waterford, in talking to their police supervisors, their chief, their lieutenants, what we would do is coordinate with them, with their accident reconstruction guys, and we would have basically a two-community reconstruction team, like the cars unit that the state police currently has, that comes out and helps investigate fatalities and things of that nature. So we would now take on that responsibility. If there is some asset, and this really goes back to the contract between the town and the state police, whatever asset we do not currently have as Eastline officers available to us during that shift, we would then rely upon the state police to provide those extra services under that current program that we operate. One of the things that is definitely a pro is we will gain major time, because currently under this program, if I were to request a helicopter, we have two dogs, but sometimes if they're not working or they're on vacation, they're just not available for us to even call them in from home, we'll call one of their dogs. Instead of them calling next door to Waterford for a dog, they'll get a dog out of Litchfield County and wait that extra hour for that dog, when I literally have one that is less than a quarter mile away.